September eleventh, I think this is September eleventh, two thousand twenty-three, Ohio County Board of Education meeting is called the order at six P M. Before we rise, I would like to say something very briefly. This is Patriot Day, it's a day of remembrance. I was sitting right there on September eleventh, two thousand and one, when I found out that our country was under attack. Today is a day that we need to think about how lucky we are to be Americans. And for us to think about the brave souls that lost their lives, the heroes and the innocents, today is a day that we need to think about the pledge of allegiance. So when you pledge allegiance today, please think about the impact and the words, many times we just say it. Today, please think about that. So can we all please rise with the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Superintendent's information, Dr. Miller.
Yes, I'd like to start off by congratulating and welcoming some very special educators to the Board of Education tonight who were awarded the West Virginia Teacher Innovation Grants. And I asked them if they would say a few words regarding what their plans are. So first, Krista Miller and Heather Puglisi. Again, thank you for being here. I can even go over there so everybody can watch.
Right, so our grant was creating connections through family engagement nights. We're constantly thinking and reflecting on different issues we face in the classroom and how we can address these issues. And so one of the things we have talked about is how parent involvement has become less and less, especially COVID years kind of put a halt to things, so trying to get families back, but not only coming to the school, but coming in a meaningful way. So we looked at designing different nights for our families to have the opportunity to see what the students are doing in class, but also understand how they can have a meaningful hand in that. We really want to create a partnership between families and teachers' classrooms so we can work together as one unit to get the most from our students. So we're starting this project with second grade in our school, that's where we wanted it, and then hopefully we'll see success and be able to expand into our whole school from that. So we have four nights planned, and Heather's going to talk about this.
So we have four nights planned, one for each of the nine weeks. Our first one deals with our first module, which is on seasons. So we want to plan a meaningful talk about those books with the parents and also look at the illustrations in those books and do a paint and snap. Our second one, we do work with Ms. Lee Anne from the Ohio County Public Library, so we want to do a library night with the parents and the kids to involve our community. And our third one, we have the kids publish their own books, so we want to do an author night. And our last one is for games you can play over the summer to keep that learning happening even while they are away from school, so showing parents things they can do over the summer. So we are really excited about our four nights and involving our parents in fun and meaningful ways.
Can I say something real quick? We have an author in our midst. Mr. Peter Choklis has written his own book, so he may be a wonderful guest to come to speak when you do author night. What do you think about that beat?
Thank you, congratulations. West Liberty Elementary teacher, Brandy Lachi.
So for my grant, I, it was called Let Me Set 3D Print. We do currently have a 3D printer at West Liberty Elementary, but one of the drawbacks to that is that whenever the kids design something and print it, it usually takes a whole day for that print. So for a classroom, I mean, you could take however many kids are in there, it can take almost a month to get that done, and they're so excited about it. This is their world, we're just living in it. They just understand this much stuff so much more than I do. So I thought it would be really cool if we had some 3D printers and we could get them involved in the community, help them see, become, help them see how they can become young entrepreneurs, how they can problem solve through that type of technology. So what we're going to do, we're going to have all of our partners in ed and local West Liberty businesses. I'm going to meet with them beforehand to see who I would be interested in. And then our fourth and fifth grader, if you have enough businesses interested, they will meet with, I'll partner them up, and they'll meet with their business partner and help them solve a problem. I mean, it could be, you know, something as simple as organizing the numerous down at Dale Sanson Beach store, someplace to keep that organized, or working out with the Lions Football Activity Center across the street. And last year, we helped them plant a garden. And I thought, you know, something we could do for them, and obviously I'm going to let them think of things, but just off the top of my head, I thought, oh, my idea, if we can print little reusable garden painters so that they could identify what is planted, just so the kids can, you know, get their feel for it and see how they can help the community with their skills. And what I've noticed, I had, I taught myself how to use a 3D printer with numerous YouTube videos. And when I went to teach my fourth and fifth graders how to use our 3D printer, they blew me away because what took me two weeks of, like, when I say YouTube videos, I mean a lot of YouTube videos. It just so made sense to them, and that's where I can see, like, the real age difference there, because it just makes sense to them. It was in the games that they play, it's in the television that they watch, everything is 3D to them, so it just makes sense. And I just thought, what a great way to incorporate, we are going to bring in writing to that, we're going to talk about math, when we're talking about the measurement, we can talk about the different perspectives, because they can line things up on their screen, and in the front view, it looks like it's perfect, and then I go through and I twist it on their screen, on their touchscreens, and they're like, it's not even touching. I'm like, I know. So we talk about perspectives and how that can even travel over into immediate relationships, how you see something is not how it really is. And I just think this project encompasses so much and can really show them and the community what they're capable of.
Thank you, congratulations. And our last West Virginia University Teacher Innovation Grant was awarded to Ms. Sam Wisman who has received, oh, I can't even guess how many thousands and thousands of dollars you have.
I've round a hundred and fifty thousand.
Well, I'm kind of bipolar in what I do. I am a very, I started out a very traditional librarian, and I have gone very STEM in my later years, so this project is a blend of both of those things. My project is called 3D Super Me, and we are purchasing handheld 3D scanners and some additional 3D printers to solve the problem of things taking a while to print. So what will happen is the fifth graders will be partnered with kindergarteners, and they will use the handheld scanners to scan the kindergarteners in a superhero pose. And we will print those in the 3D printers and in white. And then the next time the fifth graders meet with the kindergarteners, they will use markers and they'll design what the superhero's costume looks like and look at hair color, and then they will meet and write a story about the character they've created. And then to take this project out into the community, they will take their stories and their superhero figures and take them across the street to Peterson Rehabilitation Hospital, and they will share their stories with the patients there. Writing sometimes is not exciting, but I think when you bring a superhero in, and we're going to bring in the outside audience of the patients at Peterson who have always been excited to have the kids come, that'll make a real difference. So that's both my reading and literature and my STEM side coming up this project. Thank you. Congratulations. Before I share a couple of things, I just want to thank each of you for going above and beyond in the classroom and trying to find those extra opportunities and extra activities to make it very meaningful for your students. So thank you, we appreciate you and support you as you keep getting in more and more money. Also, I'd like to share with the board, I had an opportunity to go to alumni night for the Willing Park High School band. When I tell you I had chills, when Pat Garrett came out and began his conducting of more than a hundred alumni people were there, plus the band, watching our current band members high fiving each other, saying, we got this, we got this. It was magical, magical. After their performance, they did the fight song, they did their halftime show, and then Mr. Birch had the, had the student, he called the alumni by year, so he did two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty, all the way back to nineteen seventy-six, people came back off that field, and it was amazing. There were so many smiles, it was, it was awesome. I can't wait for next year. So congratulations to Ms. Birch. Also want to thank Jamie Crowe, who is the executive director at Elmhurst, she invited me to come to Rotary, and the people at Rotary were so excited to hear about all the things that are happening in Ohio County, so it was really nice to go back there. We went at the beginning of our eight years together, asking them to support a bond, and here we are at the end, and be able to share those things. It was, it was a very great thing. Last week, I traveled to Stonewall Jackson, where I had an opportunity to work with new superintendents. I believe there are sixteen new superintendents across the state of West Virginia. So as a mentor to those new superintendents, it was a, also a meaningful experience. Tomorrow, first grade Woodsdale Elementary School teacher, Jamie Young, will be traveling to Charleston, West Virginia as Ohio County's Teacher of the Year finalist, or Ohio County's Teacher of the Year, and she is a West Virginia Teacher of the Year finalist. So she is in the top five, so we are very excited for her. And finally, then we want to wish her the best of luck. And last piece of information, I was going through my emails at the end of the day and noticed that we received an email from West Liberty University, where we have more than a hundred students, Susan, correct me if I'm wrong, a hundred students that are placed in a residency that will be working with our teachers. So we're very excited to those numbers. We have students that are interested in teaching, and they're going to be working with the experts and the best of the best, so we hope that we keep those great ones and move on.
Pretty cool. We hired a lot.
That's all I have right now, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Miller. Moments permission. Mr. Schramm, would you like to go first tonight?
Thanks, Mr. Garber. Thank you. I forgot my tears. I'll buy a soap and contacts, something like that. So I wanted to, I had written down my notes on the teacher innovation grants, so they all took off after they made their whole speech. But congratulations, ladies, all of you. That's a great deal. 3D printers are a lot better than Bill Donahue's throwing the two out for at you in drafting class.
Who's your?
Andy knows. Mr. Croft knows. Usually came with a colorful epiphanies. I noticed that Betty DeKay, a retired teacher, from last time I remember, she was in middle. Maybe she was there with Mr. Garber, maybe she was there with Mr. Seema, was in the paper for doing astronomy in Chile since she's retired. She's become big and strong with NASA and teachers and has been all around the country at those places, so I thought that was really cool. I did note the passing of two former teachers. One was actually my teacher as well, it's my son's, it's Dorcas Coleman, although she got married, I don't remember her married name. She had taught at Warwick High School, junior high, and Warwick Middle, where she was also her of his wise moment, a librarian among other things, and Rosemary Corey, who taught for a long time. We'd be remiss if we didn't remember Angelene Angie Cortazzo.
Angelene Cortazzo.
Cortazzo, thank you. My wife would yell at me, Andy. She is the mother-in-law of our president, Mr. Garber, his wife's Lynn's mother, the mother of Andy's son Brett, his daughter Amy just works with us, and I guess Andy, I didn't know, has a twin daughter named Addie.
That's great. We call her Addie.
And so our condolences to you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Schramm.
She unfortunately had a funeral a long way away from here, it seems like a long way, so I don't know that Mr. Garber got the, got the crowd that would normally come for someone, but I did note in her obituary, Mr. Garber, that she made good yakis. My wife, as you know, is Italian, and she made them once with her grandmother and had one nuko, and never again was allowed to make nukis. It seems to be harder to do than anyone would think when you get them at a restaurant.
Actually, Mr. Schramm, we pronounce them yakis, and she, she makes them out of ricotta cheese, normally they're made with potato.
Yes.
But she makes them out of ricotta, and they float in the top when you boil them. And I told, I'm the one in the obituary said they're the world's greatest yakis. They are, they were fantastic.
Well, hopefully your wife got the recipe, Andy, at least I hope that got passed down. And last of all, while Mr. Garber stole a little bit of what I was thinking about, I've never been at a public meeting anyplace on September eleventh before. I actually kind of wondered about the efficacy of even having a public meeting on September eleventh. Mr. Garber pointed out that today's Patriots Day, and it was set up as a reminder of September eleventh, two thousand and one. He was sitting here, I was at work, but our children were all in schools in Ohio County at that point in time. It's a reminder of that event and the two thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven people were killed, and what has been reported for it to be the greatest act of terrorism in human history. The first Patriots Day was September eleventh, two thousand and twelve, and the bill in Congress deemed it a national day of mourning. Put those numbers in perspective, as to the people who died that day, I took a look at our two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three enrollment figures. That would mean that every person, adult and child, Willing Park High School, Tridelfia and Warwick Middle Schools, and Woodsdale and Elm Grove Elementary Schools, all died that one day. Patriots Day has perhaps a special meaning for us here tonight, I think, for among the reasons for the attack was the hatred of what we do here at every board meeting. We meet together freely as elected officials, governmental employees and citizens exercising their rights guaranteed by our United States and state constitutions. I don't often think of how great a privilege that we, among all the world, have when I come here, but tonight I'd like us to remember how blessed we are to be in this place at this time. I don't particularly like the never forget mantra, because I think it should be always remembered, or even in our darkest times, there are heroes and lights of hope. Patriots will find a love. That's all I have, Mr. Garber, thank you.
Well said, Mr. Schramm, thank you very much. Mr. Croft?
Today, at Harry's Court, there was a nine eleven service of remembrance that was put together by Rabbi Leach, he did an amazing job. We had members of the symphony of music, and it was a solemn remembrance, as Andy and Eric had pointed out, and much appreciate the effort that the rabbi put into pulling that together. I also had it reported to me that the Willing Park High School marching band killed it Friday. I regret that the football game was canceled, although the football players should have still showed up to support the band. I heard the bands were absolutely amazing. Thanks to Books-A-Million and the Highlands, I heard that that was a very successful event. And it was good to see that our Ohio County Schools Community and Service Group met together. I hope that they can come back and report to the board of what they're up to. And a final thank you to Steve and Benick, who answered a call of Nancy Hughes, who is our CPA at the Greater Women's Sports and Entertainment Authority, and giving her some sound guidance on keeping us on that board out of jail. So thank you, Steve.
Thank you, well said, Mr. Croft. Mr. Choklis?
I remember being in room B three oh nine on that day. A young man came running into the room and said, turn the TV on, please. So I turned it on and found out what was happening, and later on, I was shocked to find out that one of my former student athletes was in one of the floors below where the plane hit me, then got out safely. So that's one thing that I'll never forget about that. Also, was able to go to the West Virginia School Board Association meeting on Friday and Saturday, a lot of neat stuff, but I wish I would have been able to come to the band show. I probably would have been the oldest one there if I had, if I had gone, and I don't know where my clarinet is, but I don't know if that would have worked anyway.
Thank you, Mr. Choklis.
Mr. Garber, do you remember Mrs. Avery's son?
Johnny, he was one of my students.
That's who it was.
Is that who you're thinking about, Mr. Choklis? Yeah, she was a teacher, right, in the elementary school.
She had retired, she just recently retired, I believe, is that sound right, Dr. Miller? She was a great substitute teacher when I used to, when I was, when I was a teacher, I used to call her all the time, and she was great, and then...
And then I just remember her.
Yeah. And Johnny was one of my boys, one of my students.
Here for her son.
It's kind of hard to follow up with the other three board members that have articulated, but I do want to say that I couldn't be more excited about those grants. I personally think the effort that it takes to go above and beyond, we need to acknowledge that, and I'm so glad we did that this evening. Those three, those four ladies are doing a wonderful job of drawing the community into the schools, and that is one of the things that we really like to see happen, so great job. And they're doing stimulating activities for our kids that are, Mr. Riddle, they're very technology oriented, aren't you proud of that, sir? I too was excited about the band festival this Friday, unfortunately, I could not make it either. I think it's really cool with the alumni band coming back, and I don't know, I need to maybe drop this on Mr. Birch's lap, but I think this should be an annual event. I think they ought to do this annually, I think it provides a lot of incentive. I think the band is returning to be the pride of Ohio County again, and I'm really excited about that, and I think we all are, as board members. That being said, are there any delegations, Ms. Gallo, no delegations? Personnel, Dr. Miller?
Yes, I'd like to welcome Charles Marple as a two hundred and thirty day facilitator of countywide events assigned to Willing Park High School. Jason Pennybacker being recommended for a position as a two hundred day power systems technology instructor. Kimberly Wolf being recommended for a position as a two hundred day elementary teacher. Congratulations to Nathan Schreipack for his degree status upgrade from a master's plus thirty to a master's plus forty-five. And if the board could please remove the recommendation of Brianna Blend, SAT co-ordinator Warwick School. Also like to welcome service personnel Cory Bryan being recommended for a position as a two hundred day countywide supervisory aide paraprofessional assigned to Willing Middle School. Melissa Farrell being recommended for a position as a two hundred day cook assigned to Willing Park High School. Tiara Nelson recommended for a position as a two hundred day countywide supervisory aide, and Lois Rutter being recommended for a position as a two forty day secretary, central office, effective tomorrow. And all other personnel as presented.
To approve the personnel presented with the release of Brianna Blend.
Second. Is there any discussion? All those in favor, the personnel agenda is presented minus the one, do so by saying aye. I pose nay for o. Follow-up reports in action, school safety, Mr. Jones.
Thank you. Only that Wednesday morning, we are having a countywide safety committee with some parents, students, PROs. I asked Mr. Croft if he could attend, as a board member, some of our personnel, like Dr. Shepherd and Jason Fromapple, and it should be a good meeting to try to have a periodic about, probably about every six weeks, to keep everybody informed and let them know what kind of steps we are taking in the realm of safety. So that will be eight fifteen Wednesday morning, and I'll report out after how that goes, and I was going to tell you that after the meeting, but I'm glad you're writing it down, come join us.
Do you have any upgrade on the SROs?
Go ahead.
Do you have any updates on SROs? Are we doing on the security officers in schools?
The same as...
Everything's the same?
Yeah, we have one more that...
That's what I wanted to do.
Oh, yeah. One more, sorry, I didn't understand what you were asking.
And I didn't articulate it very well.
One, one more that has to get certified, re-upped certification in firearm training, what she's doing this week, I believe, so he should be able to start, I'm thinking they don't let me know officially, but probably in the next week or so.
Very good. So we're getting down to the point where we have almost every building covered, correct?
Correct.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Security camera updates, Mr. Benick and, Mr. Crum, you look different today.
I was going to say.
Mr. Benick?
Just a short... Just a short, I only have a small piece of this, this is mostly Mr. Crum, just trying to fill in. There are three Siemens proposals before you, one for Middle Creek and one for Elm Grove. Those are both SBA funds that we'll be paying for those. And then another scope of work that includes Willing Park High School, just extra cameras there, Steenrod Elementary School, West Liberty, Bethlehem, and then some here at the central office. Those are going to be general funds, but that's to kind of bring all of those areas that need to kind of up to date and on the same system as on all of the other, on with all the other schools. So that's kind of what I have in the front view, and we actually have a representative from Siemens here.
Which are the SBA contracts, Dave?
Middle Creek and Elm Grove, the new schools, where the construction is.
I was going to say, the other, so those are one hundred and twenty-five and one hundred and sixteen, the remainder is Willing Park High School, Steenrod, Bethlehem and West Live at one hundred and twenty-nine. You can't, no SBA funds for those?
There will not be SBA funds for those. I can look around and see if one funds can help with a little bit of that, but we're running out of those, so it wouldn't be very much.
So then the remainder is going to have to come out of the general funds. And if my understanding is correct, we've selected the Siemens platform?
Correct.
And so my initial reaction was, okay, what other quotes do we have? But if we were to do that, then suddenly we have two different platforms.
Correct. Okay. And Siemens is proprietary, this is a proprietary, sole, sole source to the ZEEGA system, you can get it anywhere else, so that's what makes it, you kind of need to pile on that.
So what's our federal investment?
I'd have to, that's a, that's a large amount, because it's going through bond funds, it's going through SBA funds, and some, and now general funds, it's going to be a large amount of money, but I mean, David's going to have all the way to this.
And are there ongoing subscription charges and maintenance charges on an annual basis?
That, that's a question, that's more of a question for David, I know that there are some, but I mean, that's more for Siemens.
So your Siemens, why don't you answer my question?
So Jeff Swoboda Stevens, thank you for the...
Thank you, Jeff, for coming.
Yeah. So yes, there are recurring fees annually for the cameras for the school, I don't have those numbers in front of me, I don't know what they are, I'll just go with my head as far as, yeah.
To give you a little history, Siemens worked way back in the day when we first initiated security cameras into buildings, and that was probably in the nineties. So we've been dealing with them for quite a long time, so I'm sure we have accrued quite a lot of security equipment through Siemens from multiple financial sources.
So are we going to be on a singular platform then?
Yes.
And so with these updates, is it going to be a singular update, or is it going to be updates per school? How, I'm trying to get my, my arms around the ongoing costs, I mean, this is three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars, and I know we have significant investment prior to that, and I hate to have this captive to one organization because it's proprietary in nature, and then we just have to keep feeding that same cost.
and then we just have to keep feeding that same cost.
Are you saying, almost like the roof that you own at the bedroom?
Yeah, it's just, are we so far into this that we've got to have a single platform? You know, have we, you know, from the Siemens, Jeff, from the standpoint, you know, what have you done for high-class schools to try to lower our costs?
So, there have been, a few of the projects we've done, we have gone to internal sourcing that we have, and come to get discounts to help with lowering some of those costs, to reduce the upfront cost for some of this stuff. And I know there's a rate that we give you guys as far as that licensing. And we keep that down as basically a, similar to what would be a, like, to a purchase agreement with like ScanSource or one of those types. That's kind of the level where we keep all the licensing and everything to help with that cost.
So, were there any discounts on this $371,000?
Yes.
So, what would it have been without the discounts?
I don't have those numbers.
Can you give those to Steve or to send them back to somebody? Or to David?
Yeah, Steve, I can show you.
I think it would be helpful as we, as a group of fiduciaries for our community and spending its funds, to be able to explain that our relationship is reciprocal. That we give you a lot of business, but you do give us discounts on subscriptions as well as equipment. And if we could articulate that back to the community, that would be helpful, at least from my perspective. I don't have any other questions, Mr. Parker.
Anyone else?
I don't, if I could.
Mr. Schramm?
Dr. Miller, you told me these cameras were...
Safety cameras?
Yeah, they're necessary because we have to have cameras in unsupervised areas. Is that right?
So, I believe some of these cameras, and Mrs. Dow and Dr. Shepherd are both here, in self-contained classrooms, you need to have a camera provided, as well as in the restrooms, we need to have the audio piece provided. So, I believe that is embedded in some of these numbers. That was, I can't even guess, how many self-contained classrooms are we talking?
Mr. Schramm, the legislature passed a bill that required us to have those security cameras in the special needs classrooms.
Those are all unfortunate, something I'm aware.
Correct.
I just wondered how much, how many of those, how much of this is for that? How much of this is, is the system now complete with this purchase?
So...
Or are we looking at having to come back and buy more cameras later?
So, after with West Liberty and Steenrod and Wheeling Park, we did some reviews, and we were, it was brought to our attention that the restroom cameras and those things, those were covered to, if those were added, I should say, to this, to fill those holes. And the new projects for Elm Grove and Middle Creek, that's the sum that accounted for, for any of those projects, right? So, the outside of the restrooms, all that's part of this proposal.
So, you are going to tell us how many you think that, you probably don't know. I'll talk to you, how many of that's covered, or do you?
I think we have 12 self-contained classrooms with cameras, and then maybe six bathrooms with audio. Because it's only bathrooms that are connected to the classrooms, and all of our classrooms have that.
And the bathrooms are only audio, they're not... After we get hammered for other parental rights violations, this one will make sure it's only audio. So, is, is the system complete now?
It will be.
Or are we still going to have more to buy?
Yeah, so, just...
I don't know. Right on the...
It'll be close, but about, when we first started the bond work, we used to budget $300,000 or $400,000 a year for HVAC upgrades around the county that we would put into the budget, pay in advance. And then every year, we would do a project like Tridelfia's gymnasium, for example. We would air condition. Once we started the bond work and we got basically all new HVAC upgrades, we just simply took that money, and Steve, stop me if I'm... We took that money that we were paying upfront to Siemens in our budget, and we moved it into security so we could upgrade all of our cameras throughout the county. So, it's budgeted in there every year to, instead of the HVAC for that. And also, we will get a good reimbursement from the state because it does fall under safety.
With proper coding in this county, which of course is going to be done, we will receive 80% back in next year's state aid.
For this whole project?
No, just, just the, just not the, not the SBA portions. That's not going to happen. But the 129 that go towards the fill-ins, that's general.
So, it's similar to the buses?
Well, well, not quite. The buses are over eight years. This is, this is a one-shot deal. The buses are over eight years. It takes much longer to get them.
So, when you mentioned the proper coding for that, do we need to be cautious of what we're buying and installing and characterizing it to get that reimbursement? And do you, do you have that matrix down?
That's what David and I did, yes.
Good.
I'm almost done. Sorry to keep you there for a moment. I, I do want to kind of know what the license fee is, you know, to redo. I think it'd be nice to know. And Steve, does that get reimbursed, or do we all have to draw that?
It does. Anything security involved, if it's in security in our coding, it gets reimbursed.
And does this include installation? And I don't think you all do the installation, so who does?
We're doing the installation on this.
You're doing on this one? Okay. Thank you. That's all I had.
Any other questions? I think the community at large will be happy that we're doing this kind of, and investing this kind of money for the security of our little angels in the buildings. And I'm glad that we are going to get a reimbursement for that that even justifies us going this direction even more. Do we need a vote to accept the bid?
Yes.
Okay.
Is it just a report? That's on here, it's a report.
With Adam on the line, it'd be nice to have a vote, but if it's...
I think the three contracts are presented to request a motion to accept the contracts.
Okay. Okay, is there a motion to accept the three contracts as presented by Siemens?
So, moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of accepting the three contract, the contracts from Siemens for the locations as designated, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pos nay, four oh. Thank you, sir. Again, appreciate you being here. Going under the hotlights there.
No worries.
All right. Moving on to the consent agenda, is there, are there things on the consent agenda that we would like to pull to discuss?
I'd like to pull B, C, and F.
Anyone else?
Mr. Parker, if you could pull off the minutes. We had a computer compromised and was unable to get those tonight, so they will be at the next meeting.
Scratch A.
So, we were hacked.
Yeah. Yes. Somebody was hacked, Miss Schramm.
Shit, shit.
Mrs. Galloway wasn't. Like the physics kid did when Mr. Riddle blocked all them, for which he's still hated by at least two of my sons. There's a lot that's still hate me for other things, right? We would have had this problem, right, Mr. Riddle? He were off the games, would you?
We all still love you, Mr. Riddle, okay, Dr. Riddle? Okay, Dave, go ahead. Do you want to begin?
Sure, thank you. Sure. So, with the YSS agreement, I just didn't see any of our addendums or the WV96 that goes with it. So, I have no problem with the content. I just want to make sure we get our addendum and the WV96 attached.
Absolutely.
On the salary schedule approval, my preference would be to table that. And I, I don't dispute any of the numbers. I just don't know what makes them up. I just need, I need some, Steve, I need...
Large formula.
Yeah, so just send me the formulas and contractual provisions to say, okay, here's why this goes from 1 to 1.25.
So, yeah, the, the only, are we happy to send that to you? The only, we have the formula, and we have, I have that. But there's not really a contractual. It's just what's been done year by year.
Well, show me what we have, and that way, we as a board can verify, trust with verify kind of thing.
Would you like to move to table that?
I would move to table that salary schedule approval until our next meeting.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor of tabling Cs, our age schedule approval, do so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, pos nay, four oh. Okay, David. Thank you. With the provision that Mr. Bennet will provide the board with the calculations, how it's calculated.
Sure.
All right, F, pay bills.
All right, Steve, check number 216550. It's the Ohio County Commission with the radio maintenance. Do you recall how long that contract is? How long are we going to be paying radio maintenance?
Every month, as long as we have radios.
I understand that it's a monthly, but do we, is that a David Crum question as far as the length of that? It can't be in perpetuity.
It's, it's every year. Yeah, but we kind of have, may put it to you right now. Just as long as we have radios, we have to pay maintenance.
And we have the radios, so unless we replace the radios, that's 1,700 for a fixed cost. Just a general question, I always hate seeing the amount we pay to Richard Coffee Concepts for copies. Has that gone down at all with a move towards paperless? And is that, is that an initiative we could consider?
Well, the, the 7,000 free use, that is the lease fee for, the core lease fee for all locations. So, that's something, I mean...
That's not based on usage?
It's not based on usage, because we do not own any of the printers. You know, the extras, I mean, I'd have to do an analysis. It's the, well, and actually, those, the two above it are non-extras.
There's no...
Yes, but the binding agenda is that has nothing to do with coffee. So, it's the extra right there is the $205,000 to the middle. You know, they kept the rent, the lease fee pretty well flat the last time we picked this out.
Okay.
So, I, you know, being that this is, we're in the second year of this contract, and we were just up for five years, and it's the seventh year, and they thought it was pretty flat.
Is that an extension of the contract?
It was a new bid.
Okay.
It was a new bid. So, I, it's a, it's a, it's a five, it was a one-year with four...
Automatic rooms.
So, you know, they've kept things flat, so I can't, you know, there's no... And they're pretty quick when anything breaks.
Okay.
Just a point of information on that, Mr. Crum. Particularly the primary grades, they still have to reproduce educational materials for the younger ones. And I know that that is something that probably we can move to down the road, but it's very difficult for the primary kids to do everything electronically. But, your point's well taken. It is a costly...
This is the time of year, it's always that. Like, our numbers are always higher in the beginning of the year. Beginning of the year, beginning of the semester, August, September, January, the two, two, higher times.
Check 216573, school outfitters LLC, he's our OCLC de-escalation system.
It's not what it is.
Yeah, it was, it's just that, that's a, I'm sorry, that's a, I have a WIVIS report that gets printed off. The de-escalation room, that's, that's, that's what, it's, they, the outfitting, meeting furniture, whatever.
Okay.
So, OCLC is the alternative school. So, we have some of our asset funds allocated to furniture and de-escalation materials at Tridelfia's annex for the kids who are...
Okay, so this went to Tridelfia Annex. Okay. Thank you. I saw the check 216641, Caston Baker, for 435,000. Partial payment for Wheeling Park High School paving. Is that the back lot?
It is. It is. It was the, it's the back lot. I think there's some extra areas that they did as well.
Yeah, so, is the partial, is there, is there a retainage?
It's just a retainage, lucky.
Okay. And the 2166362 of them for the partial payments for the bus cameras? Is that all of the cameras?
It is. It is all the cameras, and that's also a retainage.
So, those two checks together are, because there's the 216,000.
No, that, that was a separate invoice, that was on that invoice I have to pull. Those are both retainage. We still have retainage to pay on both of those.
And then, there were separate checks to JD&E on the track facility upgrades. Is that project complete now?
I believe it mostly is.
Yes, it is. Okay. So, would there just be probably some retainage on those?
No, those are final payments.
So, those, that's...
Yeah, that, because, I mean, there was payments made for just to, just as a construction project.
Rick, have you been down to the facility? Are you pleased with...
Oh, yeah. Yeah, it's great. The only thing is, some of the dressing for the building and some awnings and different things like that while we were waiting on it. I don't know, have you seen it?
No, I haven't been down there since...
You should go check out the restrooms. They're beautiful. And the building, it was built beautiful, the tracks, but it's all really well done. Got a lot of compliments that the dick died. It wasn't even fully done at that point. It's really nice.
Now, work the dick died, and it was still a working process. Are we going to have a scoreboard, a timer?
There, there's, so, the scoreboard, we tore down. But we, at least when we started this, we planned on putting a timer on the side of that building where all the fans, where they said could see, it'd be right on the building, where you could see a digital timer. I don't know if that's been ordered or anything yet, but we'll have to check with Kish Talk on that one.
That's all I had. Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions on, on anything on the agenda? So, just to clarify, what are we going to do about B? Are we going to wait for the addendum before we approve it?
I would, I would suggest we approve it with understanding that the addendums will be added.
All right, very good. Okay, is there a motion to accept the consent agenda, scratching A? Item B, D, E, and F with item C, table. Is there a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the, what I said before?
Aye.
Do someone say aye?
Aye.
Pos nay? Four oh, thank you, Ms. Galloway. Future meetings. Monday, September 25th, 2023, regular meeting, 6 o'clock, the board office. Monday, October 9th, 2023, regular meeting, 6 o'clock, the board office. Monday, October 23rd, 2023, regular meeting at the board office. With that being said, I adjourn this meeting at?
6:46, 46 minutes, Mr. Parker.
6:46, thank you.